Good afternoon, President Clark and members of City Council. My name is Cynthia Figueroa and I'm the Commissioner of the City's Department of Human Services. Today with me is Kimberly Ali, Deputy Commissioner for Child Welfare Operations, and Christopher Simony, Deputy Commissioner for DHS Finance and Contracts, as well as many members of my senior leadership team, as well as COA leadership. I want to thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm proud to lead this department, which has made tremendous strides towards improving outcomes for children. We've been honored to work with many members of council on key initiatives that impact the safety of children and youth across the city. I had previously submitted testimony and I'm going to minimize some of my oral comments today because I understand we're running slightly behind schedule. But if you will allow me, I'd like to provide at least some highlights from my prepared remarks. As you may be aware, DHS is currently under a provisional certificate of compliance from Pennsylvania Department of Human Services. This status is largely due in part to the rapid transition of improving outcomes for children, as well as significant increases in the number of reports to our hotline as a result of new legislation. This administration is committed to making the reforms needed to build a transparent and accountable system that delivers high-quality services to children and families of Philadelphia. We are restructuring the systems by building a strong prevention division, integrating the work of DHS and COA into one division called Child Welfare Operations, and we have strengthened the Division of Performance, Management, and Technology with the integration of technology and IT into this division. I'm pleased to report that after a number of very difficult years, we are stabilizing and showing gains of our reform efforts related to IOC. After three years, DHS is in a position to answer the question that both City Council and the public have asked of our department for years. What is better as a result of IOC and is it working? The answer is yes. Although there is more work to do, we are seeing steady gains. Our outcomes have improved significantly and since IOC began in January 2013 specifically, more children live with kin, more children live closer to their homes, more children are reaching permanency, and fewer children live in group homes and institutional settings than before IOC. As of March 31st, 2017, 46% of children in placement are living with kin. This is the highest percentage ever. At the beginning of IOC, in March of '13, it was only 32%. Currently, 56% of children in foster and kinship care live within five miles of their home. In 2012, this measurement was only 46%. The number of reunifications also begin to grow. The number and the percentage of children living in group homes and institutions have dropped significantly since the inception of IOC. As of March 31st, 2017, only 13% of children are in placement or live in a group home or institutional setting. That is down from almost 22% in March 31st of 2013. While we are seeing positive outcomes, it's very important to note that like with many other counties in Pennsylvania, we continue to see a significant growth in the number of reports that have been made to the child abuse hotline. As a result of new laws passed after the Jerry Sandusky Sandal, we have seen a similar rise in the number of investigations. When IOC started in 2013, our hotline processed slightly over 21,000 referrals during that fiscal year. In fiscal year 2017, we're projected to handle approximately 34,000 referrals. This is an unprecedented 61% increase over a four-year period and as a result of our increase, our main priority has been to assure that we're properly staffed to handle the hotline calls and the investigations that happen. We have finally slowed the steep increase in the number of children in placement. After the last year's hearing, we testified last year that there was a 13% increase in the number of children in placement from the prior year. Our increase since the last hearing is zero and we expect to see the number to continue to decrease as a result of practice reform. Another major improvement involves decreasing the caseload of our community umbrella agencies, the COAs. We have lowered caseload at the COAs by increasing funding for staff to create a 1 to 10 case management ratio for families instead of previously 1 to 13. As you are aware, Mayor Kenny proposed two key initiatives in the fiscal year 2018 budget that would benefit children and families. The city is requesting $1.7 million in match of state funding to increase the per diem rate to foster parents to assist with the day-to-day care of children that are in the custody of DHS. We're also pleased that the mayor's budget included $336,000, that is a match in state funds, to fund 10 new attorneys to the city's Philadelphia Law Department. We know that the council and the public have demanded accountability and transparency regarding the COAs and IOC. And in effort to hold our providers more accountable, we have created a more transparent system by the establishment of a scorecard to measure the performance of our COAs. During 2017, we're collecting baseline data in the areas of safety, single case management, court compliance, family assessments, permanency, finance, diversity, and governance. This baseline data will be published in September of 2017 and there'll be quarterly reviews. After that, a yearly scorecard will compare the COA agencies and it will be published publicly. I'm looking forward to sharing the results of the scorecard to council and other members of the public. Finally, because we value diversity, we're working hard to ensure the contractors that we have are spending and their boards and their staff reflect the demographics of the children and the families we serve. We're proud to share that our seven COA agencies met the mayor's 2017 goal of 30% discretionary spending for minority women and disabled-owned businesses. This is an enormous increase since 2015 when the percentage was only 8%. From fiscal year 2015 to 2017, the total percentage of minority board members in the COAs increased from 35% to 46%. And Councilwoman Blondell mentioned an infographic which you can find. We left copies on your desk that demonstrate the growth in minorities. We know that we alone cannot be the answer to keeping children safe. It really does take a village. We need everyone, every day, to work with us to watch and care for our children. I know that in the time allotted this afternoon, it's going to be difficult to address all of the challenges and complexities of our system, but we are willing and encourage continued dialogue with council, myself, members of the leadership team, and our community partners to follow up, to do a deeper dive on the solutions to these challenges. Thank you for your support. My staff and I are here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Got a couple of quick questions. One, you just referenced the mayor's order to deal with discretionary spending and you've achieved significant numbers based on what you've said. What percentage of the discretionary spending is in your department?
It's how much total in terms of the department, not the who we contract?
Yeah, what's the percentage of the total department budget is discretionary spending?
Give me one second.
As it relates to contracts.
Or if it's going to take root.
All right, no problem.
That's still our department. So overall, the citywide participation, our goals is at 35% and for fiscal year 2017, 26% of our budget.
26%.
26%.
Okay. And the 74% is traditional procurement process that does not give you flexibility, I'm assuming?
Correct. And given the size of our budget, you're aware that the majority of our contractors are nonprofit. So where there's discretionary, the department's at 26%, but we're happy that some of our largest providers, particularly the community umbrella organizations, are now at 30%.
Okay. On your testimony on page three, you show 255 departmental vacancies as of December 2016, and I'm not sure if you're still at that number. Even with that significant number of vacancies, you're requesting appropriations for 11 additional positions. Can you explain to me why?
Sure.
Sure, Councilman. We, since the December 2016, 66 positions have actually been filled at DHS as are primarily social workers. So that brings the number of...
Pull it a little closer.
Oh, sorry about that. Sorry. Since December 2016, 66 new positions have been added to the department, have been filled, which reduces that number significantly. It doesn't go all the way, of course.
So it reduces it from 255 to below 200?
Right.
So why are you asking for 11 appropriations for 11 additional?
Yes, so this is something that we identified when we were putting together the budget is that there are a number of positions that show up in the department's complement that are not really funded and have not been filled for quite four years, frankly. And we...
Why are we appropriating money for it?
So when we put together the budget, we looked at it and, keeping in context, that we had sort of just started and we saw this issue and we built up the budget based on how many people we think we need and what their salaries are going to be and sort of worked from there. And what we're trying to do over the course of fiscal '18 in preparation for the fiscal '19 budget is to take a much closer look at those other positions, those approximately 187 that you mentioned, and understand which ones are positions that we really need over the long term and which positions we don't need. To be candid, it's something that we didn't have enough time going into the budget process to fully look at.
And I do want to add that this is a conversation that we've been having with the state in terms of the total overall complement of the DHS staff versus the work as it's transitioned to the community umbrella agencies. And so certainly something that we intend to work with the Budget Office on.
Okay, but I'm still going to ask you a question again. You have appropriations for, now you say 187, that are not filled and you're asking for appropriations for 11 additional. Make me understand that. Why would we appropriate money for 11?
So the requests for the 11 additional positions that we received were actually related to the attorneys for the law department and so our department pays specifically for the attorneys for the Department of Human Services. So that's far and different from the social work positions that DHS has...
So you can't transfer the money from the 187?
No, and there's a, correct. And there's a different match that's provided by the state regarding our work with the law department. So that while the city puts in a match, it's a, I believe it's a...
30%.
It's a 40% match for 60% funds that are received by the state for the attorneys.
So why can't you, I'm still trying to understand, why can't you transfer the money between classification? I mean, end of the day, it's money, right? And I know it might be in a different category, but if you have money for 187 employees and you want to do an intergovernmental transfer ordinance, I don't understand why you can't do that to deal with the 11 positions.
Yeah, and we, I mean, we recently testified for a transfer ordinance to make sure that, I mean, the way that our funding is set up is we have 50% comes directly from the state, 25 from the feds, and 25 from the city. And we're constantly trying to figure out how do we leverage the majority of that so that the city is able to draw down as much as possible. And so in terms of the vacancies, that we do intend to look at where we are in our ability to make sure that we're properly staffed. We knew, when I came in, we knew that there were significant gaps around investigations and part of our concern is we never know exactly where we're going to be in terms of how many folks, how many kids are in placement, how many children on the JJ side. And so I would say that the clarity for us around the attorneys was a specific ask to the state to support the increase in funding that they were providing us in terms of dollars coming in from the state.
All right. It didn't appear that I'm ever going to understand your response from a pure dollars and cents perspective, so I'm not going to take up all my time on that question. But I really don't understand why we're appropriating 11 additional positions. For the record. In your five-year plan, you state that DHS planned to reduce the number of caseloads per solicitor from 240 to 170 and the current number of cases handled per solicitor is above the maximum advised by the American Bar Association. What is the number of the cases recommended per solicitor?
By the American Bar Association?
Yes.
Is that what you mean?
40 to 50. It's 40 to 50.
It's under 100.
How many?
According to the law department, it's under 100 would be that big deal.
Under 100, wow.
So this moves us closer, but not...
So you've got a long ways to go.
Yep.
All right. You talked about, you know, page seven of your testimony shows that halfway through FY '17, 10.7% of children in and out of home placement achieved permanency out of all the children in a given year. This is tracking well under the year-end goal for FY '17, which is 26%. Can you detail why this percentage is so low halfway through the fiscal year and is there any likelihood that you're going to come close to your goal?
So if you're, so in terms of where we are for the data, we're actually showing that we, at the midway point, were more than over a half percent. So our annualized goal is 25%.
Okay.
And we were at 14% after the second quarter. We're on target to meet our permanency rate for kids this year.
So there will be incremental increases percentage-wise, not number? Because this is percentage.
Correct. Yes. Yes, so it's a percentage of our overall count. So is that a numeric? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I'm just, you know, you said a percentage and I'm saying the percentage is based on the annualized number. So as you move through this process, the more people you place, you'll get to a higher percentage. I just want to make sure I understand.
Yes, that's correct. So I'm trying to find the, so I'm on page seven in terms of your looking, but we are on target. So I mean, again, part of what we showed is that we're, we intend to hit the target. All of our data shows it. So if we didn't show it properly, we can certainly make sure that the data is shared with you and with much more clarity.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. I still don't understand that 11...
I will definitely, we will definitely follow up with you.
Maybe you can sit down one day and explain to me why we should be...
Yes, we would love that conversation.
All right, all right. Okay, I'm sure there'll be some follow-up conversation on that before we... And the reason I say that, I hate to keep belaboring it, but when we appropriate dollars, it's based on revenues and, i.e. people's taxes. So we're raising people's taxes to pay for a finite number of employees and we decide not to spend it. We don't like give that money back to the people. So it would be one thing if you said, "Well, you know what? We're going to give you the money back because we didn't really need it." So that's why I'm concerned when I see these departments coming in when they have these over appropriations in terms of the need.
Yeah, and it doesn't answer the question about the staffing, which I understand your frustration and we will do our best to get back to you on that matter. We will not underspend on our budget.
All right, okay. We'll be watching.
That I know, I can answer for sure.
All right, thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Dobb.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon. I just want to make sure I understand your budget. So I'm going to refer to page three of your testimony. It says general fund financial summary. That's the request from the city, 108 million?
Correct.
And then the, on the next page, page four, the 698 million? That's all funds. Is that, is the city folded into that number or not?
It is.
It is. So the, it's basically 590 without the city?
Yes.
Okay. So it's roughly 700 million total?
Correct.
And specifically, I have a couple of questions on their employee compensation. In fiscal year '16, the actual obligations on page three were $21,700,000. A year later, they're estimated to be $25,700,000, an 18.5% increase. Why did it go up so much?
Between '16 and '17, you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, so since Commissioner Figueroa started, we've, we had not been hiring very much over the past couple of years and we had a lot of vacancies that needed to be filled. And so since new leadership took over in September, we've been doing a significant amount of hiring and you see that folded into those projections.
Okay. And it's going up another 5%? It's coming here for '18?
The, are you talking about the general fund share or...?
Well, your proposed for '18 is 24 million.
Correct, yeah.
And your appropriations for '17 were 23,400, so the difference there is about 5%? 5, 6%?
Yeah.
So let me ask, refer to page, the next page over, which is page four. Just want to make sure I understand. The employee benefits, they're from the city?
They are.
So what do you think the percentage is of, for every dollar we pay of employee benefits? Because on this document, it looks like it's under 40%. I'm trying to figure out how your department's below everybody else.
So one of the particularities about the DHS budget is that you will see the fringes for Class 100 in the general fund side of things and you don't see them in the grants, in the all-funds areas, so that's sort of lower.
So that's just, that 30, I'm a little confused. Are you saying the Class 100 employee benefits in the all-funds is just for the general fund?
So when you, if you look at, just going off the operating budget on page two, it's kind of split between the general and the grants revenue funds. And you'll see that in the general fund, it shows the $24.2 million in salaries and it doesn't actually show the benefits because those are budgeted through the finance department. So they don't actually show up in our budget. Whereas in our grants revenue fund, those fringes are included, up to the rates permitted by the various reimbursements were allowed by state and federal sources.
So are you, are you saying that in the city, we're not showing the benefits on this document, right?
On the DHS specific budget, correct.
But we are showing those benefits from the state?
Yes, so for the funding that gets reimbursed by the state and the federal government, we do show the fringe benefits. But for the fringes paid for by the general fund, those aren't included in this 108.4 million dollar number you see.
It's a little confusing. Are you saying the employee compensation appropriated for '18 is 103 million? That's what the document says?
That is what the document says, yes.
And then you're saying the benefits are 38 million? But you're saying we're not including the city's portion of those benefits for the city salaries of 24 million?
Those benefits are, to my understanding, they're budgeted elsewhere in the Department of Finance's budget because they carry all of the fringe benefits.
So would it be accurate to take the 103 million, to take the 24 million off that figure and say that without the city's portion, it's about 80 million and the benefits are 38?
You could, yes, but then you'd be taking out, sorry, I...
Do me a favor, I don't want to waste all this time on this, but this is confusing and I don't think it's clear. I think I'd like to see clearly, maybe you can submit it to the Council President and he'll share it with us. What are the benefits on both programs percentage-wise of what we're paying? And then the other question I had was, what are the number, if you know, what are the number of children that have gone through the system in the past 12 months?
In the past four months? I mean, we do...
Past 12, let's say.
Past 12 months.
Or whatever year you want to use. How many kids do we service in a 12-month period?
So there are kids that come in and out of the, come in and out of our system, but at any given time, it's approximately 10,000 on the dependency side. That's both placement and children that are in home care. That does not account for the, I mentioned earlier that we're close to approximately 21,000-plus investigations and that's families, not kids. So then in terms of the total, you know, several hundred, you know, several thousand families that we come into contact with across the year, it's hard to give a very specific, you know, annualized number for the entire bucket.
And so the last question for this round is, have we ever had an outside audit of this whole department? And not in a negative way, but in a way that looks at everything and says, here's the accounting, here's how we can make it better, here's some creative ideas on how to make delivery of services more productive and efficient? Have we had that kind of an audit?
Well, we've worked closely at a local level with PFM and then also we have had, the state has audited, so the AG's office has done an audit of Department of Human Services.
And are those recommendations available for this?
We can certainly provide them.
For us? Okay. If you could send it to us, I appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely.
Thanks for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. And for the record, that's two issues that are confusing. Hopefully we won't get any more. I'm sure we'll have to do a follow-up on Councilman Dobb's issue and my issue, all right?
Got it.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman McKielyna Sanchez.
Good afternoon, ladies. Oh, gentlemen. Oh, I forgot.
We've got to have a few of them, all right?
I tell you, well, we men can't catch a break.
My apologies. Real quickly, I also want to kind of recognize the matrix that you created with some of the data sets. I think it's hugely important as we look at that. My question to you is, are we creating vendor profiles about who DHS works with so that along with the COAs, and I'll have a separate COA, I noticed that in your, you're moving around a lot of your prevention dollars. I know you're looking at a new prevention services outline. Do you have a profile of who are certain of your providers right now?
When you say profile, you mean in terms of their capacity, service areas?
Who's providing services, you know?
Geographic.
Geographic. Because I noticed there's a few that like are in my district that I'm not aware of what services they're providing. Is there a way that you can capture that data? What kind of input will council have around some of the prevention services as you move them back into...
So certainly we can look, I mean, we can pull based on your district what happens to be in that area and then we can walk you through what is that specific, if it's one that you're not familiar with, we can certainly walk you through.
Yeah, one of the areas is we try to realign. There's a lot of services that, providing in the rec centers and stuff that are funded and I think I need to get a better idea of what they are in terms of, you know, who are the adults in the building. I know the mayor and his team have talked about enhancing some of those services and so I just want to get a better idea of that. So before people move to make a bunch of those decisions, just in some of those cases, as you know, some of the facilities are less than adequate.
Yes.
And so we want to talk through some of that.
I did, Councilwoman, I know that you're, this has been very important to you that I did get a breakdown specifically on prevention as it relates to OST.
Okay.
And so as of right now, we have 77 programs that are located mostly within the, so within the school district. 15 are in charter schools, 16 in parochial. There are 44 in community-based and there's only two in the rec centers. So in terms of the OST DHS-funded programs, which is different than what the rec centers offer. And then specifically, if you're curious, I do have it broken out by district. So I have the number of slots and programs per district.
And then can you provide that with the cost per service?
I certainly can, yep.
Okay, that would be helpful. I noticed that we, for the out-of-school time, all of that money goes through PHMC. Is there a reason why we continue to use them as a fiscal agent? Do these organizations not have the capacity for us to contract them directly?
So historically, that has been the way that that contract has been delivered and aside from the contracting, there's technical assistance, some technology that they provide. And it's a capacity issue in terms of if we were to bring that back in-house, we'd have to be able to build the staffing capacity to manage both contractually, monitoring, just given the volume of the number of kids. So it's close to 17,000 kids served and I mentioned the number of programs. So it would definitely be a challenge based on some of the cost issues.
Okay, well, I guess one of my concerns with this is it seems like we keep privatizing government, right? And we keep pushing this out externally. And I think that with technology, you're going to be doing program-based budgeting next year. I think those, this is the time where we reevaluate some of the work that we do and say, is this better served internally versus externally? And with that, the decision around the COA in light of what's going on with Wattsworth, is the position of the department is that they're going to continue to contract that out or is it going to come in-house? What is going to be your process?
So as of right now, the contracts stand in place. We're on, we are aware that there's conversations going on between two different entities about what the future might hold for those organizations. And so we're certainly working with our law department and contracts to determine what that looks like in the future. And I don't think there's any definitive answers yet from those two institutions of where they will end up. But we are meeting on a regular basis to make sure that the city's interests are well represented.
Yeah, let me, again, for the record, state that when we first rolled this out, it was based on the geography of police districts. I think you can agree with me that that is not necessarily the right way to break up community-based services and utilize any restructuring as an opportunity to revisit those geographies and that they fall more in line to what the goal was of providing community-based services in people's backyard versus a police district. So I'm going to be looking for that realignment in light of the fact that this constituency is very transient and moves.
Yeah, it's an excellent point. And if I can just state that one of the huge lessons learned for the department on the implementation was not to move too quickly and so that any change or realignment that we think about, how do we do that with the best interest of kids and families so that there's a least amount of disruption? So that we don't disrupt who's providing the services? Because I feel like we're now finally at a place to say we're stabilizing and we're showing improvement. And so anything that we do around alignment or the changes that, we have to be thoughtful about how do we then roll that out?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go for my next round.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. I wanted to follow up on the questions from Councilman Sanchez. We talked about realignment in reference to COAs, you talked about the police districts. And I'm curious about other forms of realignment within the department. I know early on in the beginning of this conversation of COAs and implementation with Emory, there was a discussion how workload for employees at the Department of Human Services may change. As you do this realignment, will that also change where you have more department employees doing more investigations, intake? How that will, how will that transpire?
So, great question, Councilman. So yes, one of the impacts of the Sandusky legislation that we talked about, we saw a 61% increase in the total number of referrals and then subsequently investigations. And so we had to look to transfer folks to support the front end, what we call the front end, which is taking the calls, following up on intake, and then following up on the investigations. And so we've looked at, actually, we've looked at our front-end design and been looking at how we need to adjust that. We've also been looking at the different areas of work that support the department to move towards permanency. So we've just began those conversations with both the state. We've had very preliminary conversations with 47 in terms of how is the best layout and utilization of the existing staff structures.
So at this point, you not really have a perspective of what changes may occur? But you do have at this point some employees who are doing kind of a dual role of investigations and also intake?
So the, just to, for a point of clarity, DHS, when we rolled out IOC and the COAs, we hold everything up until the placement. So the hotline is managed by Department of Human Services. All of the referrals are managed by the Department of Human Services and the investigations. It is not until a placement decision is made that the case is then transferred to the COAs. If there's a placement disruption, DHS also manages that work. So the, what we call the front end, that is completely held. So there's no dual role happening. And then once it's transitioned, the case management is solely and exclusively delivered by the COA caseworker.
And because, I mean, do you anticipate future staffing changes with the realignment or is it too early to tell at this point?
We're just beginning to look at that planning, but we recognize that both in the change of the, the impact on the front end. And as we've seen, so I'm, I'm happy to report that we're now at a place that we only have 25 to 27 caseworkers that are doing what would have been previously called a dual role. So the majority, you know, 99% of the, the families are with COA case managers.
As a result of the recent scoring that you've done of COAs, has that provided any information in reference to what the department may be thinking from a long-term plan perspective, reference to COAs?
So we actually just talked about this yesterday with the COA leadership, that now that we've gotten to a level of stability, we're not exactly where we need to be, that we need to sit down actually with the COAs to think about what's our longer-term strategy? What do we look like two, three, four, five years down the road? We really, in all honesty, we're just managing the implementation and rollout of these reform efforts. It happened at the time where legislation changed and who could report for what and et cetera, really, I think, caught us all by surprise at a time where we're trying to reform. So the, what you're bringing up is exactly in line with what our thinking has been, is, is how do we sit down with the, with the community to talk about how we move this work forward?
I also see in the budget detail is additional dollars provided for COAs. What will those dollars be provided for? Just direct service or other items?
So it, it varies according to COAs, and they use it to augment and support needs of their own families. So whether it's uniforms, a food pantry, you know, things that are going to support the, the actual families that are being served by the COAs. On that note, I'll say that we've been very strategic in making sure that there is those resources. But also because DHS is managing the front end of the work, meaning the hotline, that the prevention contracting that we do out of DHS is important, that we maintain that work to be able to divert services from even entering into our system.
Now that you're starting to reach a level of stability with reference to the COA model, are there other, other additional steps that DHS may be taking to improve efficiency within the department?
Absolutely. We're looking, you heard me say earlier, that our division that used to just be performance management is now performance management technology. One of the huge efficiencies that needed is how we use technology and data to use our work. So one is that we hope in the future we'll be using more predictive analytics on the front end in terms of how we're determining, you know, decisions on, on our case acceptance. But also, how do we make the work easier for the COAs in the field? And then also, how do we have, we have a very archaic servers, et cetera, that are going to be brought up to date in the very near future. But also even our case management systems and our, our plan in terms of rolling that out. So we're moving in the right steps, and I think that efficiency is only going to help the workers do that in a much better, in a much better manner.
And will that information for that type of predictive analytics be provided? Or will you use that for conversations both with DHS staff as well as COAs?
Yeah, and I would just say that we're really at the infancy stage because you need to make sure that you have very reliable data from a reliable source to then use that in order, to, to analyze, in order to make determinations moving forward. But that's, that's the path that we're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to first start off by thanking Commissioner Figueroa for partnering with myself and Councilwoman Helen Kim and Curtis Jones to abolish what we know, which is known as child support for those who have juveniles going through the system. So I do want to thank you for working with us on that particular issue, which we believe that will improve the quality of lives and bringing families together of juveniles that actually go through the actual system. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge your deputy, Kim. She's one of those lifelong residents that represents the best that Point Breeze has to offer, kind of that property belief. And I'm proud to see her in her position. And, you know, where I grew up in Point Breeze, not a lot of us went away to college, but she was like an all-star basketball player while I was one of the kids hanging on the corner. And, you know, she's, she's done good for herself. It's good to see her there. That's the T. How you doing, sir? Um, just-
He's all right, Tim.
Good guy. So, um-
The men kept getting pushed aside during this hearing. I don't know. Bad pattern here.
Yeah, I gave him a shout-out, but I don't really know him, but it's cool. So, quick questions. So obviously, and I know my colleagues will be hosting hearings on the issue of Wordsworth. And I know we talked briefly about it early on before. But we want to go on the record regarding how we're going to move forward regarding oversight, quality control. And also, as I mentioned before, although the residential component has been abolished, I want to know where are the children who have those extreme needs are going now? And then two, which are future plans as relates to moving on and, and addressing such a horrific situation? And then the second part of my question is, the percentage of young people who are in foster care, young people who also are in placement, that are transitioning back into the school district? And what does that process looks like? I remember, I remember the Youth Network several years ago did a report when we talk about the issue of truancy. One of those key things, homelessness amongst young people, is that young people who are in foster care, who are in placement, they go to places like Slaton Farms, Glenn Mills, and then never comes back into the foot of your school system. And they go back out on the street, hanging out and getting basically involved in things that are pretty much not good for them as well as the community, and puts them on a path of a life of crime and violence. So those two things I'm pretty concerned about, and want to get your perspective on how we move forward. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so I'll start with the beginning and, and just highlighting the RTF planning. So in terms of residential treatment facilities, and I, I share the position that council takes that it was a really devastating and, and difficult period for all of us, and particularly, obviously, the family who lost a loved one. We had at the time of the tragedy that occurred, we had approximately 52 children that were residing in the residential treatment facility. And we worked very quickly with our partners to find alternative placements for those children. Given the closure of that facility meant that we no longer had a residential treatment facility in Philadelphia County. We are fortunate that there's some within the surrounding areas, and DHS is highly committed to keeping kids in the state of Pennsylvania. But we are definitely recognized that this is a real, this has been a huge impact for the system in terms of what do we have in our own backyard, in terms of the needs of serving, some of them are difficult to serve. On that note, we've been meeting pretty, pretty regularly with our partners in Community Behavior Health, in DBH, to really talk about what the, what's the best offering and what do things need to look like going forward? What are the lessons learned for us in terms of size, capacity, training, and funding?
Isn't that a totally different company?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So whatever we, whatever we determine in terms of planning, the way that the, the funding is set up, we've talked with CBH about the opportunities of them releasing some RFPs. So that would be open to a general response. So it would be necessarily one very specific provider, but it would be an opportunity for folks to respond.
Is that separate from Wordsworth as a whole COA?
Yes. So the residential treatment piece of work is completely independent from the dependency work of the, the COAs. I'm trying to remember-
Would Wordsworth be responsible though? Because they're the umbrella organization? And I'm just asking for clarity because I get these questions as well.
Sure. So the, so, so, I think we're confusing two different, maybe two different pieces here. So the residential treatment facility that COA has is no longer gone. Wordsworth still currently does have a COA case management contract with the Department of Human Services. And so it is-
But the residential component was under Wordsworth, correct?
Wordsworth, the agency, yes.
The agency?
Yes, correct.
Which in a sense would be responsible for making sure whatever took place in that particular residential facility was under their watch? Is that correct?
That would be accurate, Councilman.
That's, so have we ever considered, since this did take place under their watch, the possibility of actually using a totally different company?
So we're, yeah, we're aware of council's position. And so in, in transitioning, pivoting from the RTF to the COA work, one of the things that we recognize in the, and I'm trying to keep this as, as clear as possible, is that in the rollout, the expedited rollout of the COAs, not having a contingency plan or not thinking through how is the best way to have a transparent process to evaluate the COAs, that's something that we have developed most, more recently. So the COA scorecard is really what's going to provide you, council, and the public an approach to look at fairly and equitably through a due process to say, what COA is really performing well and who's serving at a quality level. And so then based on that, I think also just piggyback on what Councilwoman Sanchez said, is that also thinking about alignment. So if we do RFP out, any COA work, what does that look like? And it needs to be based on the best quality for our children and families. And so the scorecard is, is a process that's going to lead us to that, that I believe is a fair and equitable process.
So basically, you're not going to throw the whole, the baby out in the bath for it at the same time?
At this moment, I'm not in a position to say that that's, that's the, the current status. I did want to answer your question about the, if, did I satisfy that answer?
Yes.
Okay. In regards to the foster care and children who are, who are either transitioning back to their own schools or if they've been in placement and they're transitioning back, we are very fortunate. We're the only county in the Commonwealth who has an education support center. We modeled that after New York City, who had actually realized, and based on Philadelphia Network's great report and research that had shown that children who are in the foster care system tend to do or fare worse in their educational outcomes. So as a result, the education support center looks to work to one, driving kids to stay in their homeschools so there's a least amount of disruption. You know, the fact that we're keeping kids closer to their physical homes is helping us keep them in their schools. Our education support center is physically located at 440, so we work in very close partnership with the school district. In relation to the truancy issues in the Commonwealth, it is unfortunate a child can be, can be placed ultimately because of their inability to improve the significant truancy patterns that they might be exhibiting. And children who transition back, we want to make sure that we're working as closely as possible with the district because there are often challenges upon, upon their return or returning to their homeschool. There is, with the last presidential administration, the Every Student Succeeds Act. DHS is in a position and is complying with that act. And we actually are creating a unit in addition to support the needs that are based on that. So we're trying to work hand in glove with, with the school district. But it's, it's definitely, there's a lot in that area. And working with our partners, both the district and, and the courts.
I'm way past my time. I just want to slide one more, one last part in there. Just in terms of Wordsworth, again, because it's still going through my head, similar to the Danielle Kelly scenario. We were supposed to be moving forward, so we don't have these type of incidents. But just for the record, was the director who, of the residential treatment facility, like who was fired? Who was let go? Was the staff released? Like what type of actions took place as a result of this young man losing his life and the staff and people who were overseeing it?
So, I can't speak on behalf of Wordsworth, but I can say that the, the staff, obviously-
Cynthia, move the microphone a little closer to you. There you go.
That when the facility was closed, we did indicate to Wordsworth, because we have the right within our contractual obligation, that no residential treatment staff were to work in any of the COA programming. So that's one guarantee that we can provide to council. And then we are aware that there was a change in leadership at Wordsworth? I think Ms. Ali wanted to add something, Councilman.
The only other thing that I wanted to add, Councilman, when you indicated, once young people from foster care return back to Philadelphia County, so by way of either reunification or a step down to come back in Philadelphia, one of the things that we do is ensure that they continue to have a case manager. At the point that young people are reunified or discharged, we do not discharge their case from court because we want to ensure that the appropriate transition plan is in place. And one of the pieces of that transition plan is to make sure that their educational needs are being met.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Ginn?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. I'm going to just clarify one thing that Councilman Johnson raised. It's my understanding that the scheduling for the COA scorecards is set to roll out this summer, is that correct? But that the first reports will not come in until a year later?
So the ba, so the baseline of the scorecard will be available by September of 2017. The, the quarterly analysis will have, begin July 1.
July 1, 2018?
No, July, July 1 of the summer. So the baseline is from this most previous fiscal year. And then the quarterly will be done beginning July 1 of 2017.
And when will the first scorecard be ready for evaluation?
So the first public, big annualized scorecard will be at the end of the calendar year. We're discussing internally, and I know particularly council would be eager to see some of those scores before we get to the end of the year. And, and in all transparency, part of the, the-
Which calendar year? December 2017?
No, I'm sorry, fiscal year. So it, it wouldn't be until the summer. So when we have, from the baseline, we have a full year, that would be the public.
So what year are we talking about? What month and year?
So that would be July of 2018.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. So, I mean, just for clarity, I, I think what the councilmen and others are concerned about is that the state stripped Wordsworth license in December of 2016 after the, not only just the homicide that happened there, but the numerous other abuses that were going on. But we will not have an evaluation of Wordsworth that's viable until June 2018 to make a decision about the quality of this COA. And I think that that is one of the concerns that we're, that we have, that simply waiting 18 months or more after a state strips its license to determine the health of that overall agency seems like not, not an appropriate timeline.
So what I've said in numerous occasions is that we are not necessarily going to wait to the end of the year. So if that, we see any COA who is performing below standard and cannot, cannot change the quality of their work- of their work, that obviously we have also talked about being prepared to issue an RFP so that it's not my intention or the departments that we would wait that period of time.
Yeah. And I guess I'm not just talking about any COO, but this one in particular, just because of the level that was described. And, you know, I think that that would be my main concern, that we aren't, this isn't about a general. And I understand that this, first of all, I support the scorecard, and I think it's definitely good that we're doing this long overdue. But for this COO in particular, I think the concern is about eighteen months. And are we talking, treating this like any other COO or recognizing it within the context of the history that's been going on and has been well documented? I had a couple of quick questions. I want to focus in on the social workers in schools. So I think when we spoke, you had mentioned that there are currently about nineteen social workers housed in our-
It's slightly less than that. I just got the count today, but yeah, we-
How did you make decisions about how to place those social workers? How did they get placed at those schools?
So we did work with the school district and making sure that we're trying to pick home-based schools that also were reflective of our COO areas and where it was going to be most significant in terms of the volume of kids in care.
Yeah. And, you know, one of the things that we've been tracking is the number, percentages of high schools, for example, that have significant numbers of system-involved youth in addition to other types of youth, special needs and ELL students. And we know that there are, you know, almost two dozen of them, that would certainly rise to that standard. You know, we have about 181 vacant positions that are budgeted but unfilled within DHS's area. Is there any opportunity for us to see and look at those positions as being incredibly valuable and expanding the number of social workers that could be based in schools?
Yes, I know we've had a chance to talk about this at length. One of the challenges that we have at the state and part of what also Councilman Green mentioned in terms of our alignment is for our non-carrying, non-case carrying social workers, that our ability to demonstrate that their work falls within what's reimbursable by the state. And so their work at the school definitely has to be tied to that. So the state looks at how many non-case carrying positions we have. So certainly, we, I don't want to make a commitment today, but we certainly look at that. We know you've been a champion for that issue. We do work very closely with the district, and I definitely would like to talk to the folks in the education support center to see, how has that been working? Or, you know, because the focus is very much about their work with the kids who are system-involved versus having like a counselor or case manager in the school.
Yeah. And, you know, we'd love to be supportive of that and keep continuing with that conversation. Quick questions, you know, I'm trying to ask them of a number of different agencies, but it's mostly about the residential placements. So could you just tell me, you know, from a position standpoint in DHS, who has responsibility for making sure kids are okay in residential placements, are reviewed? Who has the responsibility in DHS to make sure kids are learning? And who has the responsibility for making sure that the children are in their least restrictive setting for their learning?
Ooh, there's a lot in that. Okay, so I'll try it. So in terms of the least restrictive setting, that has a lot to do with what is the presenting need of the child. So is there a behavioral health issue and they need an evaluation for a placement and an RTF? That's something that we do in partnership with Community Behavioral Health. In terms of congregate care, that's work that we do to determine what could be the best possible location for the child. So on that end, remind me the first part of the question.
Who actually is responsible for making sure that the students are learning?
So right now, we don't have the legal mandate or the authority to ensure the educational requirements. We, as we've talked, Councilwoman, we're very concerned about this issue, and so we're willing to figure out how can DHS help support and play a lead in doing a deeper dive on the needs of kids on on-ground schools in the residential facilities? Because we recognize that their time away needs to be proactive in every area. And so that is both a combination of the Department of Education and the School District of Philadelphia. And we want, they're very open to working with us on that and are eager to see us take a leading role.
Right. And I'll conclude. You know, it's my understanding that the district is supposed to receive the plans that they get back from these placement agencies, but they don't actually have the power to enforce them in the place of, you know, of the child's learning. Like the district does not have the authority to come in, review, you know, the children's school plans, their quality of learning or anything like that and offer feedback. And yet, you know, as we know, it's not only that we want the students to be in the best possibility of learning. The district spends $65 million a year on students' learning and residential placement and has, and it feels like there's very little control about the quality of the learning for the millions of dollars that we're putting into it. So I'm trying to understand a little bit about where you see the gaps and where we could try to help build that out.
So I believe that the longer-term vision is for us to partner with the school district deeper and what that ultimately looks like in terms of the vision of who holds those providers accountable around the education piece is definitely something that needs to have the school district at the table. We recognize that that is something that we're all in agreement, so nobody's denying that there isn't need for that work to improve. And I'm grateful that the department, along with some foundations that we've been talking to, are very interested in supporting a deeper dive in that area.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Squillaw, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Commissioner, and your team for coming in. I do want to thank you for your ability to work with us as council and your willingness to answer our questions and concerns. And, you know, sometimes as members of council, a lot of times we just want to answer, not always the answers we want, but we get the answers that we need to have. So we really appreciate you and your team willing to work with us through those issues because any time you have a heartbreaking story, and I know we usually only hear one side of the story, but when we have that heartbreaking story that we want to try to get answers for, you and your team are more than willing to get us that information. So thank you so much. Is there a list? Do we know how many kids that are in the system that are either not kept at a local school or not maintained, I guess go into foster care and not maintained into, back with a parent or aunt or uncle or grandparent? Do we know a percentage of that?
So are you asking how many total number of kids are in placement, not physically with kin or foster care?
Yes.
Yes, we have that number. So I want to make sure I have it. I have it, I actually even have it by out of state, but I will ask my handy folks here to help me find out where it is in this awesome book of information that I have.
I mean, if you don't have it, you have it?
No, we can definitely get it for you, though. So by, so on the dependency side, so if they're not in dependent or delinquent care, there are 743 kids that are in either a group home institution, an RTF, or juvenile, or, so, not juvenile, sorry.
What was that, seven what?
743.
Seven forty.
Which is, on the dependency side, is, it's about 13% of our overall placement population.
Okay. So, and from speaking with you earlier, it seems like the population is growing, but also the number of incidents are growing. I mean, I think it was since the Sandusky case, more and more people are reporting issues to us. And it seems now that, it's a good thing, but knowing that they are reporting, we have to follow up on it. So it seems like the workload of a lot of the people are greater. So therefore, sometimes the numbers are greater for each caseworker.
Yes.
Is there, and resources help. We need more resources in order to handle these things. So it's like a snowball effect. Is there a plan in action to lessen the caseload on these COUAs and our workforce? And what would be the best way to move forward to make sure that we have an adequate number of people working in this area?
So we, the city, as well as the state, joined us on our commitment to reduce the caseload size of the caseworkers. And so the rate that we were funding was one to 13. And I'm happy to report that we committed to a one to 10 case ratio for the COO caseworkers. We are now at approximately one to 11 average per caseworkers. Having spent some time with our state colleagues, we know that other counties are really struggling with the size of their caseload. And so this is an area where Philadelphia is actually really demonstrating some progress because we've been able to bring the caseloads down. And while the numbers have been really creeping up as a result of the new legislation and we have a lot more hotline referrals, we have stabilized. So I think I shared earlier, but it bears repeating, that last year when we testified in council, we'd seen a 13% increase in kids in placement. Year-to-date, zero. There's been a zero increase in the number of kids that are in placement. So even that, we're seeing the volume on the calls, we've been able to stabilize how many children are being accepted into service.
Okay. Because, I mean, obviously, it's important to realize, and as the pressure of the initial upgrade of calls and incidents is maintained, and I know this happened during the time we were switching gears into the COO system. So it seemed like everything happened all at once, and we couldn't wrap our hands around it. And then, you know, anytime there's a bad incident, that is actually, draws more attention to what is going on. But the bigger, I think the bigger problem is how do we wrap our hands around the number of incidents do we have? And then how do we then work with the resources we have? Or do we actually need to have additional resources in order to bring that caseload down to make sure each one of these kids is getting the proper care and attention?
Right. And I think that we have a lot of strategies that we're looking to commit to even further reduce the number of kids in care. I think the more that we can reduce the number of children that are in placement, the better the caseload size is and ultimately providing better and more resources for us, for the families that we are working with.
And I know you said earlier, your goal is to keep the children with the families or kids or grandparents, aunts, in the schools. And it makes all the sense in the world because the trauma already associated that is great, and to pull them out and put them somewhere else just adds to that. What percentage, now you said the kids in care, but what percentage are not with family or kin?
So that number, because I want to, so it is, like we said, it's just, it's like 12, I can't do the math right now, but it's 743 in dependency. We're probably talking about 11 to 12% of kids in placement are in a, are not in a home environment.
Not a home environment. But I mean, I was talking about the difference between the foster care and kinship care. So there's, there's, foster care, is that a higher percentage in foster care?
Yes. Well, no, it's a higher percentage of kinship care. So we're at an all-time high. Forty-six percent of our kids that are in placement are in kinship care.
Forty-six percent in placement are in kinship?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Blackwell?
Thank you very much. Let me ask you about the SCOP funding. I understand they're telling me that each groups were cut and also that they don't have that yearly affair in the park that we've had for forever.
So there were no cuts in this fiscal year, but we have made, identified some reductions predominantly through activities versus the opportunity to fund programs directly. And so while we know that the activities are great for our communities, what we felt was more critical is our ability to be able to demonstrate that that work is working towards prevention of abuse, neglect, or delinquency. And so it's harder for us to justify at the state that a community fair or community event is directly linked to prevention of abuse or neglect or delinquency. So we are determined that we should put more of the resources directly into the programming and not the event activities.
What about that yearly affair they had? That's still owing to the degree it was?
So the yearly event for this is not because we were at a place where we could, we didn't have any costs associated with it yet. And that event predominantly supports the providers who already received funding for the particular programs. And so we're looking to evaluate what kind of community activities would best support community members and not necessarily providers of the work.
I don't understand. Say that again. You're saying-
So the annual expo is an annual event that we do that brings together the actual providers of SCOP. And so it's not an event that we're holding for community members, but rather an event that we're holding for folks that we already provide funding to. It's also a very expensive event, and with all transparency, and along with Councilwoman Dom, I would say we're trying to be as efficient with public dollars and that we can justify the expenses related to the events that we're doing and that they directly tie to the department's mission.
I don't really, I know that, well, I always went every year, many of us went every year. And it seemed to be a wonderful event citywide. So certainly, I don't know, I don't understand what you mean, that it's a waste of money.
It's getting harder for the department to justify expenses that we were, had a lot more flexibility around prior to our current status, both being currently under provisional license with the state and a close monitoring of our budget.
Well, I'm not sure I agree, but I'll, because the SCOP groups are coming to me asking me why they can't have them. It's an affair they really look forward to every year. And you see all the SCOP groups you see or don't see during the year as an elected official and people citywide. It's been a wonderful event over the years. And no matter who has run your department, nobody's ever canceled it. And I don't know that I agree with that's a good position. And I'm sure that all of the, my colleagues can listen to me as well. So, you know, canceling the whole SCOP yearly major event, I don't know that that's a good idea. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Sanchez.
One last thing on, you know, I've worked very closely with my COUAs, and I appreciate all the work you've done in allowing them the input around the flexibility around staffing and all of that, and I think that's important. But, you know, I'm very concerned about as we move forward, and as I've said to you, what if any capacity we keep internally? And how do we ensure that ultimately those of us who have a legal and a moral obligation to, and a fiduciary and legal obligation to these children, we can handle it? I'm very concerned about the public discussions, you know, whether they merge with another organization and should not guarantee them a contract? And that any contracting is done, again, with a realignment of, we only have capacity for certain organizations to pursue these contracts. And so putting out a contract without that realignment, there's only so many people who are going to apply. And I think that I'm very concerned about folks thinking they're so big that we have to do what we can to keep them. And, you know, as I've said to you from day one, I think it is hugely important that the city maintains sustained capacity to take care of our children and that we're not solely dependent on a privatized system. And so I'm going to continue to push that and look to the process to ensure that we're following a process that long-term, we're going to be able to sustain. I noticed that in this morning, we spent a whole lot of time around CBH, and clearly your department is further ahead on developing its profiles, articulating some strategies, and you are now placed on the CBH board. How is that realignment going to help you oversee the kids that you have in placement and influence the intervention strategies that are funded through CBH?
So I think, so I would say independent from my membership on the board. Certainly, no board member should have self-serving interests when you're, you should be looking at the good of the entire.
There's a reason why the mayor chose to put all these city people on there.
That said, we are really fortunate because we're, I can't speak to previous, but I know that the department has had a historic relationship with CBH and that we are working very closely with them. We have monthly meetings at all levels, and Joan and I are in constant communication. One of the things that we've talked about is how we look at the monitoring, particularly in crisis events, but how do we, aside from she and I and our leadership team meeting, our performance management teams are meeting. And actually, probation has indicated that they want to be a part of that. And the purpose of those meetings are not to wait for an event, but rather have monthly ongoing conversations about, these are the evaluations we've done, these are the strengths that we've seen, these are the challenges we- are the challenges we've seen. Because one of the things that I've learned is that we come from the work for very different mandates. You know, we're safety, abuse, neglect, and they're really working from a clinical perspective, which then supports or can augment the, the reality of the kids that are in our custody. And so we recognize that we both bring very different things, but also a consistent balance. So I think that there's going to be much improvement in the overall communications around, if I have a particular provider that is experiencing some challenge, that they, they need to know that. And if they have a particular provider that they've been concerned about, that we need to be aware of that as well.
And, and while those are important, it's not enough, right? Ultimately, how we prescribe a treatment plan, placement plan, intervention plan for a child should be more comprehensive than that, right? And so my concern is that, again, we're leveraging the limited dollars in a way. So, you know, if we have a child that's under your care, that is getting clinical services they desperately need, particularly as we deal with trauma, but other services, there, we should be able, at that granular level, the folks around the table should be able to influence that. And that realignment may take a while, but conversations at the top level do not materialize in the kid needs a bed, the, the kid needs a roof, the kid needs some of those basic services.
Yep, absolutely.
And I, I'm, I'm not feeling optimistic, based on the discussion this morning, that, that CBH understands how important that is to the work that we're doing with children.
I'll let Kim add. I just will say that we are very committed, so it's not just meetings. And part of that is we recognize it can't just be leadership, so it's at a lot of different levels.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, in terms of on-the-ground level, CBH care managers are actually co-located at our community umbrella agencies, so that those very conversations and those services for young people are implemented right away. They also participate in our family team conferencing meetings, particularly around when young people are ready to disrupt placement in order to ensure that they remain safely in that particular placement setting, and also assist us when young people are transitioning back home to their family. So those conversations happen on a ground level. They happen every day on a ground level. And I would say that our COA case managers, as well as our DHS staff, are able to influence when young people receive services.
So I know the co-location stuff, putting two people in the same room, where's the accountability?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yeah.
So ultimately, I want to know who's in charge when they do not think the intervention meets the need of the child? And at what point is that equal? You know, one of the things around CBH, ultimately, they're an HMO, right? They're the ones who say yes or no. And what I'm saying is, what is that, you know, the protocol around, if a COA is trying to get specialized service intervention for a person or a child in their care, you know, ultimately, who makes the decision when there's a disagreement? And what are the protocols for that?
So when there is a disagreement, we, we actually have, so we'll elevate that up to the case management director or director at the COA, as well as to our operations director at DHS, as well as our DHS psychologist. Oftentimes, when we don't agree on the intervention, we involve our DHS psychologist, who also talks to CBH psychologists, so that we can come to an understanding in terms of what level of service is appropriate for that young person. What we try to stress with CBH is that although their lens is clinical, our lens is also child welfare, and the trauma in reference to the child welfare placement, we need their support around the services for the young people. And oftentimes, we do agree.
Okay, so how does a parent know that they have those options, right?
So the parents
Or the kin?
Yep, yep.
Or the guardian?
So they tend, we invite them to the family team conferencing and have those discussions. So at the, at the family teams conferencing table, we talk about the needs of the young person, as well as the needs of the family. We elevate those conversations in reference to the behavioral health or the behavioral health support that the family, the child, or even the resource parent uses. And then CBH also talks to them about if, in fact, the parent wants to appeal a decision that was, was, was not made in their best interest, they provide them that information as well.
I like to see that in practice, because I know one of our challenges at the school-based level is that principals don't have choices. Teachers don't have choices to pick providers and intervention strategies at the school level. If, in fact, that is working, I want to, I want to be able to visualize and see that and kind of experience that. Because that's, if that's the case, that should be a protocol, it should be public and very transparent. And at this point, it is not.
Yeah. And I think you said an important point, so I don't want to paint everything sunshine and rainbows, that it is about relationships too, right? And how do you best leverage those relationships in the best interest of children? And then the ability to disagree, right?
Yeah.
I think is, is really important in our, in our sister departments.
Yeah, and again, I'm just looking for, there's a lot of investment, as there should be, in children who need it, trauma-informed, all of those things. These systems are huge. And, you know, like I said, sometimes the person just needs a house, the person just needs a roof, the person just needs a bed. And we get caught up in, in that bureaucracy. And again, I know you've been open to that flexibility. I just want to make sure that we are, in fact, having a shared responsibility and accountability. And I still don't see it in the protocols that make me feel comfortable at that level, at that granular level. I want social workers and the folks on the ground to feel empowered and that they can, in fact, influence the quality of services to children and the families get.
Got it.
Thank you.
Do, duly noted.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to follow up on a couple of questions that have been already raised regarding the situation that occurred, where it was very unfortunate. And I wanted to get some perspective from you in reference to what other jurisdictions do regarding residential treatment. One of the things that I think led to unfortunate situation was the lack of facilities that we have here in the city of Philadelphia, just having one facility. And that unfortunately, many children from the city who had to be in residential treatment are throughout the Commonwealth. So my, my, my question, and this kind of goes back to when you were talking about the point regarding, in New York, where they provide educational supports for children in foster care, and we were able to learn from a New York model. What are some of the models that other jurisdictions use for residential facilities?
So, great, great question. And I will just even say that there's a great suggestion for us in, in that. In the time since the event occurred, we've been spending a lot of time internally, looking at what, you know, what do we as a system and the global system have to learn from this process, including our, how do we enhance the relationships with behavioral health and recognizing that. We do know that of the facilities that exist in Pennsylvania, that they're utilized by all the other counties. So this issue is not unique to Philadelphia County. And in fact, you know, the, the residential facility that was closed in Philadelphia had kids from all over Pennsylvania residing there. And that's true of any residential facility. And so I do think that this is a conversation to think about with our, our county partners. But I love this idea of looking to other counties that we know have greatly, greatly reduced or almost eliminated the use of institutional or residential care. We know that there's a set of the population that might require or need additional services outside of their homes. So, and the fact that we've actually greatly reduced the numbers, I think, has also impacted some of the providers. So I'm going to take your question as, as a directive in some ways for us to look at opportunities to learn from other cities that have really gotten it right around residential care.
Also, I wanted to follow up in reference to looking into the detail, page 137, which provides information regarding out-of-school time. And so my initial thought was that the out-of-school time program was going to be managed through the Managing Director's Office, but it's actually going to be managed through DHS. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
The out-of-school time program, I thought initially that was initiative of the Managing Director's Office.
So the out-of-school, there's, there's an, there is an initiative that is a strategy that is citywide to really bring to, to light the opportunity to combine some of the best practices in out-of-school time. Currently, out-of-school time funding, that it goes directly to a provider, comes from the Department of Human Services.
And it seems like by using PHMC as a provider, that's taking us back to the somewhat Philadelphia Safe and Sound model. Is that correct?
It's a pretty significant shift from the days when Safe and Sound existed and where it was really independent oversight, whereas they're a contractor to us and we're in constant communication. We work in partnership, and they don't make decisions independently related to the providers. So any RFPs, any initiatives, for example, this work that we're doing with the Managing Director's Office, is purely being led by the leadership of DHS. And then PHMC is really, in essence, staff support to the department where we lack infrastructure in that particular area.
Okay. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, you back on?
Just real quick.
Yeah, we got one more group, because I got, I have
We're here, I'm here all day.
I have, I have, huh, two more? You serious? Today?
Two more, yeah.
Today? I thought that was the same group, Supportive Housing and Empowerment Opportunity. You all are not in the same department?
[laughing]
We can't do that for today? Like, it's called Council Consolidation. All right, let me stop playing. Councilwoman Sanchez, you good?
Just real quick, I just wanted to, let me encourage, as you create those vendor profiles and some of the stakeholders for prevention services, some of the questions we asked this morning was, where folks are not certified minority are participating, a self-reporting mechanism so that we know the leadership teams, the profiles of their boards will be very helpful to us.
You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Oh, see, now, now, you all are playing with me now. Now, Councilman Green.
[laughing]
Councilman Green?
I'm just, just a follow-up regarding the out-of-school time funding that's going through PHMC. Will they provide you with information regarding the providers they're working with that are providers of color?
I'm sorry?
Will they provide you with detailed information regarding who are they providing and engaging contracts with for the out-of-school time money?
Yeah, I couldn't get that from them, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you very much for your testimony. You all have a good day.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council.